Good evening and welcome to the Socco City Council Meeting for Monday, March 25th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present this evening, including City Administrator John Behanko. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. That now takes us to item four this evening, and that is general. We do have nothing under the general item this evening. Item number five is committee correspondence to council. Any council members have any correspondence? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Traffic Safety Committee met on Thursday. There was a variety of issues, majority of which pertain to my ward, some, I think, improvements to pedestrian safety and biking stalls or bicycle stalls for bicyclists in front of City Hall here. But of particular interest to council from Ward One, we did approve a request to make, I think it's Douglas Ave and Jefferson Ave, a four-way stop. That'll happen, you know, at the discretion of DPW, but I just wanted you to be aware because I'm sure it's a change certainly for you specifically, but also your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that now takes us to item number six, and that is public comment. If there is any member of the public wishing to speak, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. On to item number seven, and that is the consent item. We do have one item this evening, and that is cancellation of the April 8th, 2024 council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent item?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion on this item? Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion for the consent item passes 7-0. Takes us now to action items under eight, and the first one this evening is a public hearing. Renewal application for a special entertainment permit. The Fraternal Order of Eagles, DBA Socco Eagles, number 3792, and that is assigned to Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. Fraternal Order of Eagles, Doing Business As, Socco Eagles, number 3792, has applied for renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit would be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has applied or has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with Socco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment 93-2. Moved to open the public hearing.
Motion has been made by Councilor Johnston to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing passes 7-0. If there is any members of the public wishing to speak, please step forward. Not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Councilor Johnston?
Moved to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by the Fraternal Order of Eagles, Doing Business As, Socco Eagles, number 3792, for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Councilor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Item B under the action items this evening is one reading, the school referendum question, and that is assigned to Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council is required to vote to determine if there will be one question or two questions on the June 11th, 2024 ballot for the school construction projects. One question option. The city council has the option of proceeding with one referendum question regarding construction projects on the June 11th ballot. Make that the fifth, June 5th. Construction. Oh, sorry, I got an amendment here, so back to the 11th. Got it. Correction, back to the 11th ballot. Construction for the building for the elementary grades, one through five, would be funded with state aid, and construction for the pre-K and kindergarten building would be funded with 100% local funding. Two question, two question option. The city council also has the option of having two referendum questions on the ballot on June 11th. Their first referendum question would apply to the construction of the building for the elementary school grades, one through five, with a total estimated cost of $110,559,905, of which $101,319,678 would be funded by the state with a local match of $9,240,227. The second referendum question would be for the construction of a pre-K and kindergarten building at a cost of $45 million, which would be 100% funded by the local taxpayers. The city council hereby approves the one referendum question option, and one referendum question shall appear on the June 11th ballot for both projects.
Motion has been made by Councilor Archer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman?
Uh, microphone. Sorry. The superintendent gave me some new numbers just a couple minutes ago, and you may want to make those adjustments on the commentary. The total project cost of the elementary school would be $1,009,321,427. The state portion would be $101,399,791, with the local portion being $7,921,636. And then the local project would be the pre-K K would be $31,427,921. So the total amount that would have to be local spending on both projects would be So these are numbers that just were given to me by the superintendent. I believe they have been approved by the state. Yep. If you might, your honor, may.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, the numbers on Friday, we were able to finalize the state budget that we will present to the State Board of Education Construction Committee. As you know, a week or so, a week ago, I was here and we were talking about that project. And the biggest change in the local portion of the project is that the $1.4 million for solar that we had had discussions about is not in the local number. We had a discussion with the Department of Education about that piece, and the feeling is that several different options. One, we talked about if the geothermal is there, that there is an IRA rebate that comes to the city. When you started to look at the math that I gave you last week between the difference between owning a system versus the PPA lease system, there was barely a million-dollar spread. And when you do the math of a million dollars over 20, 20 years with interest rates, you almost eclipse the savings between having it be the PPA, and you don't have to worry about maintenance or upgrades if someone else owns that piece. The third piece is that because we know construction will take several years, there is also some belief that some more options may be coming our way, and they felt that at this point in time, there were several things for the city. Why borrow extra money if not needed? So the suggestion in the agreement was to remove that section from the building. Doesn't mean that any of our ability to put solar panels on the building goes away. It just might have to be outside of this project, and so that's why that number's low. And then we were able to finalize the project for the locally funded pre-K K building, and that would be $31,427,921, so that the grand total, if both were accepted by the public, would be $39,349,557.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Ray? Hey, any other discussion on the motion for one, one question on the ballot? Councilor Berman and then Councilor Johnston?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, at the onset of our prior meeting, I stated a preference for the two-question option, but over the course of that meeting, I became convinced during the discussion that this truly is one project. We, as a city, desperately need both schools in order to serve our children. Moreover, should one pass and the other fail, it really leaves us without an option, and certainly not an option that serves our students and saves us any money. This is one project, two buildings, to serve all of our students, and therefore I became convinced that the question we put to the public should be to support this project in its totality or not. These aren't two separate options among which we can choose. So I appreciate Councilor Archer reading the one referendum option. I think it's definitely the best path forward and has a greatest chance of success, so I'll be supporting that option.
Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. As I said last week, I certainly probably won't get hung up on this particular question, but like most things, I, you know, feel the need to at least express, you know, my prior feelings on this. I mean, this is 10 years, a decade plus, you know, I've been involved with prior school construction committee, the latest school construction committee, so it is certainly a moment of excitement myself personally, as I'm sure it is many of the other people that have been involved. And I would fully agree with Councilor Berman, all of our need, or all of our schools do need attention. It's with that in mind, that back in 2016, myself, Councilor Precourt, or former Councilor Precourt, former Councilor Doyle, former Mayor Doyle, and former Councilor Gay, all voted to go not with what was proposed at the time, which was a one, one fix, young school only solution, you know, which I deemed lipstick on the pig at that time. We took a lot of flak for that. So, you know, I'm happy to be here, but it's certainly something I haven't ever forgotten about, because there is a segment of the population here in Socco that, you know, feel they do deserve that choice. And so, again, with that in mind, you know, fast forward to today, we're here, I'm fully supportive of that. I certainly wouldn't tell anybody else how to vote, but I do recognize, and I hear it recently on the streets, there are certain individuals that will support a school or a state-supported question. They don't want anything towards a locally funded option only. And again, I would encourage people to support both, but I do believe in the democratic process, and believe those individuals should have that right to vote yea or nay, with the understanding that the outcome may be what the outcome is. We also have to be cognizant of the fact that we have to have at least 880-some-odd people vote just to validate this question. And obviously, if this was a November election, I would have far less concerns about turnout, particularly a presidential election. So there is an element of me that is concerned that, you know, if we don't turn out a certain percentage, you could very well, and you go with a one question, you could very well risk losing the state-funded question altogether. And the way I look at it is if you have two options and you secure the state, we then at that point have the land, and nothing precludes us from turning around in November and bringing a similar question back to get the local funded with the majority of the local electorate. So again, like I said, I'm not going to get hung up on it. That's the motion before us. Clearly, we'll vote in that, you know, manner, but I just think we have to think about the psychology here, because if I was on the opposite side of this question, I would look at this as, okay, so the elected body is trying to force my hand to support everything. And again, depending on how, you know, how convicted you are in your feelings, you might get an absolute no. And again, I've heard it. I've heard it from people. Might be a small minority, I certainly hope so, but given that option, I'll just vote no together and send the message. So it's just the way I think about it from, again, the psychology element of it, what are we afraid of? Put it out there, educate the population, let them decide. The last thing you want is to have, as I've seen other elections or bonds, whether it are special elections in the middle of winter, 15 years later, I'm still hearing about that element and not being transparent. So I just, I believe it's more transparent to put two questions and let the public decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilor Archer, then Councilor Gunn?
Yes, mine's just the motion to amend the numbers. So, hey, we can do that now? All right. I make a motion that we amend the background section of the numbers read by me and then corrected by City Administrator Behanko, using his, the numbers he presented.
Motion to amend the subsidy numbers by Councilor Archer. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any additional discussion on the numbers? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to amend passes 7-0. Back to the main motion. Any additional questions or comments?
Yes, still there, sorry. That was just the motion portion. Yes, I read, just so those who know, I was debating two questions for some of the reasons that Councilor Johnston mentioned, but ultimately chose the one question because I realized the value of both are equal. We couldn't just build this new school. What would we do? Would we continue the lease with Tuttle Inn at expense? Would we repair two very, one of the, one of the schools that we have in stock? Would we put significant expenses in order to repair, renovate, and give us 20, 30 more years? Or do we go with a new school option, which has a shelf life of 15-plus? So ultimately, I decided that it's a, it's a one-project, one-budget approach.
Councilor Gunn, then Councilor Hewitt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I just want to make the comment that if there was any real concern about the actual turnout for this vote, then this vote wouldn't be taking place in June, when there's no contested primaries, there's no power line question, or Rossino question, or any of those questions that bring out people in a June election, aside from our own local community. So the people, I, in my experience, though, the people, one, are, want a finish to this one way or the other, and they want a new school. And what's motivating this whole thing was that our youngest kids were going into those modulators decade after decade, and to Councilor Archer's point, though, that the pre-K situation is still up in the air. So this vote as a package puts the whole thing to bed, and it's exactly what we want. It's what the school boards wanted, and it's what the people who have supported them wanted, though. My criticisms of the process and the result, you know, notwithstanding, at the same time, I'm sitting here and saying, look, you know, you've gotten all the way to the finish line, there's no point in making it more difficult or, you know, gumming up the works with a situation like this, though. So you put it together as one package because that's what it's designed for. It's designed to be one thing. That's why we went out and got the property, and it's why, you know, we have agreed to the situation. It's why property was built on young school, pretty much to say, like, this is not going to be a school in the future. So this is the, this is the best way to get, the cleanest, best way to get the situation that we've all been waiting for, for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hewitt?
I just have a question. The way it appears here, when it says question one option, it's kind of vague. On the two-question option, it gives numbers. Will there be a one-question option that gives the specific numbers, and it's the voters can see it?
Yep. City Administrator Behanko?
Yes, counselor. What will happen is the bond council will draft the question. All tonight is, is to determine if you want to have All tonight is, is to determine if you want to have one question or two questions. This is just background information, but the actual questions will be drafted by bond council and will be voted on by the city council to put on the ballot for June eleventh.
Okay. Counselor Johnston, then Counselor Hatch?
Counselor Hatch can go first, because my comment might not be fully germane to the question.
Okay. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy, thank you, May Rickfield. I have been vacillating on this issue, and I, like Counselor Berman, have swayed myself back into the direction of supporting a one-question option, because it is one project. I think it's pretty clear to me now that this is our opportunity to take a huge bite of the apple, yet significant amount of state funding to support this project, and we really need to look at this holistically, in terms of the, in my view, the desperate need for both schools. So I am swinging my vote to the affirmative here when we do cast them for this motion. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I'm glad we're all being swayed. Hopefully, it sways the public, right? And again, I said I wasn't going to get very hung up on this, because I fully support both options, whether it's one or two. But one of the things I did want to bring up, and again, like I said, it's not necessarily germane to the question, but as we move forward, and I recognize we're moving into budget this evening, in the past, I have floated, at least with several counselors and prior administration, I really think that ideally, we would have this in place before we go to bond, but the idea, or the concept of a school impact fee, really needs to be before this council. You know, we have them for the fire department, we have them for sewers, I mean, a good portion of that sewer impact fee is what's paying down that bond for the wastewater. So for years, we didn't have it, because we didn't really have a need for it, right? We didn't have new schools, but clearly, we're talking about one-hundred-and-ten-million-dollar-plus, right, one-hundred-and-fifty-million, that is fully bonded, regardless of whether or not the state is kicking in their share, it's fully bonded by the City of Saco. And the notion of not asking new development to contribute through an impact fee, and continually putting that burden on, you know, for lack of a better term, grandma, or those that have generations of Saco residents that have been paying all along, they educated me, they're educating my children, you know, that's what impact fees are for, and I really would hope that we kind of take that back up. Like I said, ideally, I would like to have that for the June election, so like we did with the wastewater bond, we can say, well, this is how we're offsetting these costs, and maybe that helps persuade others that are concerned about their, a direct hit to their tax bill. So, thank you.
Thank you. And City Administrator Bohenko, just for clarification purposes?
Sure.
Is the percentage of turnout, total turnout, or actually vote on the question?
It's the total turnout.
Total turnout, okay. So any registered voter that comes, as long as we have the eight-hundred and whatever number it is?
Eight-hundred-and-sixty, I think it is? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I totally could be wrong, but I thought when I calculated the number the other day, looking at the last mayoral election, which-
Governatorial, it's in the governor's election.
Governor, okay. All right, I thought we were like a thousand something, but I could be wrong.
Governor's election.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we've got motion by Counselor Archer, second by Counselor Berman, and again, this is for the one-question option. We'll call vote, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. Okay, that now takes us to item nine, and that is new business, and it is the fiscal year 2025 city budget presentation. And we have City Administrator Bohenko, Director Salas, and Director Methune.
Thank you, Mayor. As we get started for reviewing the fiscal year 2025 budget, I just wanted to thank all the department heads and Director Salas for her hard work, and our finance director as well, for their hard work. This is for the fiscal year 2025, which is June, July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2020-25. I'll turn this over to Director Salas to go through some of the specifics of how to navigate the budget. We have new council members on, so that it's going to be an ability for you to review the budget and actually have the ability to do a deep dive. I did provide all the city council members with a printed version of the budget. Also, there will be an online version, which will be posted later tonight, along with a press release relative to this meeting. So at this point, I would turn it over to Director Salas.
There we go, all right, thank you so much. So I'm going to kick off the presentation for council and members of the public, general overview of the budget process. Some of this may be familiar for those of you that have been through a couple of budget presentations before, but of course, we like to review the process for the viewing public, and for anyone who may be encountering their first budget process. So let's start with an introduction to the budget. What is a municipal budget? So a municipal budget is all of the expenses and revenues that the City of Saco needs to provide quality services for its citizens for a full year. What is the fiscal year? So the City of Saco operates on a fiscal year, goes from July 1st to June 30th. The year that is referenced is the year of the last day of the year. So for example, fiscal year 2025 goes from July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2025. What is the property tax rate? This evening, we'll be talking quite a bit about the property tax rate. The city calculates taxes by multiplying the property tax rate by the property value. What is a mill rate? The mill rate is the property tax rate per one-thousand property value. In fiscal year 2024, the mill rate was fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents. The City of Saco budget operates in five phases. The first phase is to establish the maintenance-of-effort budget. In the maintenance-of-effort budget, the city administrator and finance department work with departments to establish what their maintenance-of-effort budget is. In essence, maintenance-of-effort is doing the same thing last year, doing the same thing this year that we did last year. Doing the same thing may cost a little more, why is that? Well, we have things like cost of living increases, inflation, and contracts related to unions, and other fixed contracts with service providers. Doing the same thing could cost a little less, why is that? There are, of course, one-time expenses from the previous year that are removed from a maintenance-of-effort budget, and we do look at line items that are lower historically than what was budgeted, and try and identify savings for our taxpayers. The maintenance-of-effort budget is calculated by starting with last year's approved budget. We add year two of the approved capital plan, plus contracted increases, plus cost of living increases, plus one-time expenses, plus other savings. That gets you your maintenance-of-effort budget. Phase two is the city administrator's budget. Through the budget review process, department heads may submit requests to expand services or increase their department size. The city administrator reviews those requests and determines his final budget. The city administrator's budget is calculated by starting with the maintenance-of-effort budget, adding approved increases, subtracting other changes and adjustments. That gets you your city administrator's budget. Phase three is budget presentation. That's the phase of the budget that we are going through this evening. The finance department has compiled the city administrator's budget into the physically-printed budget book that's before you. In last Monday's meeting, the school superintendent did present the school board budget, and this evening, the city administrator and finance department will be presenting the City of Saco budget to council. Phase four is budget deliberation. The city will be going through this in the next couple of weeks. Departments will be presenting their individual budgets to council. The public can view these presentations and offer public comment during the formal public hearing, which is anticipated to be scheduled the first Monday in May. During this time, we also ask that if councilors have amendments that they would like to see to the budget, that they submit those to the finance department. This allows the finance department to assemble them ahead of time for council review on May 6th. Phase five is budget approval. This is scheduled to occur on the second Monday of May, per city charter. In phase five, the council will review and vote on the fee schedule, the capital plan, the school budget, and the municipal budget. During the municipal budget motion, council will also propose amendments to the city administrator's budget, and approve those by line item. After conclusion of the budget approval process, finance will enter the final budget into the financial system and compile the final approved budget book. This is a recap of the budget process, are there any questions?
Any questions for Director Salas?
So a quick review of the budget book, which is, like I said, in front of you this evening, the budget book contains the same seven sections as it has previously, as well as a letter of transmittal written by the city administrator, and an introduction. The introductory section contains information about the budget process, similar to what I've presented here this evening, as well as detailed information about each of the seven sections that follow in the budget book. Budget book contains an introduction of the City of Saco, a fiscal summary, the number of different charts and graphs designed to provide different ways of viewing and analyzing the city's budget. It also includes the five-year capital plan, as required by the city charter. There are department budgets, which contain both summary and detailed information, as well as thoughtfully-prepared narratives from our department heads regarding their fiscal year 24 accomplishments and 25 goals. We also have illustrated those departmental sections with some beautiful photographs provided by our communications department. Section five contains other budgeting units, such as insurance, supported entities, and fringe benefits. Specifically, in section five, you can find written budgetary request letters from our supported agencies in the community, which provide some additional detail about how they support our citizens, and justification for the requested amount. Please note that the requested amount may vary from the city administrator's approved amount for supported entities, depending on the request. Section six contains reports on our other governmental funds. The City of Saco contains a number of special revenue funds, designed to report on a self-balancing set of accounts, important financial information for funds that are restricted or committed for specific purposes. Section six contains only those special revenue and capital funds that contain anticipated revenue or expenditures for fiscal year 2025. An exhaustive list of these funds, I recommend that you review the City of Saco's published, audited financial statements for fiscal year 2022. And lastly, we have section seven, which reports the Water Resource and Recovery Department, and additional funds related to that department. A quick review of how the budgetary columns work. Most of the reports that you will find in sections one through five contain a number of columns. These are designed to provide the council with historical numbers regarding the budgetary accounts that are presented. The first four columns contain a history of actual expenditures for fiscal year 2020 through 2023. There's a column that reports fiscal year 2024 current, as of January 31, 2024, and there's also a column for the fiscal year 2024 approved budget, so the council may reference what was approved in the previous fiscal year versus the coming fiscal year. We have the maintenance-of-effort column, which, as I mentioned, is calculated by taking the 2024 approved budget, adding year two of the previous year capital plan, plus contracted increases, plus cost of living increases in years where we have those, we'll talk more about that later, plus one-time expenses from the previous year, less other savings. The dollar change and percent change columns demonstrate the difference between the fiscal year 2024 approved budget and the maintenance-of-effort budget, as we have calculated. There's a dollar change to represent the actual amount difference, as well as a percent change. The last two columns of the budget book contain the city administrator's changes. City administrator approved increases, less other changes, gets you your city administrator's budget, which is reported in the right-hand-most column of these reports. For those of you who do not often read budget books of this size or breadth, a couple of hints to assist you in working your way through this budget book. I recommend starting with the total numbers at the bottom of each table, these help you define what the actual total dollar changes are from year to year. Use the charts and graphs of each section as a guide. As human beings, we process information much easier using visuals, maybe necessarily versus numbers. So those are available specifically in section four for each department budget. Look for the biggest numbers, what numbers are changing the most. Those are your budget drivers that are having the highest impact on your budget. Use a highlighter, it helps keep track of what's important and what stands out to you. And please write down your questions. You can send your questions at any time to budget@saco main.org, and of course, have a cup of tea or coffee or tea handy, it's a long book. And now we're going to dig into the details of the city administrator's budget, and for that, I'm going to turn it back over to city administrator.
Thank you, Director Salas. Back in January of 2023, the city council approved some priorities that they wanted the administration to follow, and the top three were financial stability, school infrastructure, and economic opportunity. So we're going to get into the numbers pretty quick here. So the numbers that you see up on the screen right now, have the total expenditures for the city of seventy-three-point-three-million dollars, or about one-point-one-million-dollar increase over 2024, or one-point-five percent. The breakdown for the budget is fifty-six percent for schools, forty-two percent for city, and two percent for county. The next part of the budget is the, how we arrive at the tax rate. This year, I'm pleased to say that, working diligently with the department heads, with the finance director and the budget director, we will have a reduction in the tax rate of seventy cents. Now, last year, we had a revale, a statistical revale, and the median household price, as a result of that, was five-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars. Taking the fourteen dollars and five cent tax rate, we will see that people that have a median-priced home will have a reduction in taxes of three-hundred-and-sixty dollars. It's a real reduction of three-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Now, the median is the middle, so if you have a higher assessment, your rate will, reduction will be higher, and if you have a lower assessment, it'll be lower. But eighty-five percent of our residential taxpayers will have a reduction. Unfortunately, that we have fifteen percent of our taxpayers that were on the state stabilization program last year, which lasted only one year, and that has been eliminated. So there will be an impact to them, but I'm glad to say that it won't be as high as it would have been if we didn't have this tax rate reduction. Again, it's a real tax rate reduction. One of the reasons that we had to do a statistical revale last year was that our ratios were below what the state wanted us to have for values. They were at about sixty percent. We're now back to the ratio levels of ninety-two percent, and that is an equalization that's important, so that all taxpayers are treated equally. So in any budget, you have your expenditures that have to equal revenues. So here we have our revenues of seventy-three-point-three-million dollars, and you can see how they're broken out. Again, going back to the tax rate, you can see the changes in the tax rate. The city net tax levy went down approximately eleven-point-eight percent. The city net tax levy went down approximately 11.8%. School net tax levy went up about 4%, and the county net tax levy was about 7.87%. The overall tax levy went down 3%. One thing I want to just add is, for shorthand note, 1 mil equals about $3.9 million. Next area of numbers, this is a very busy chart, but I'm going to bring you right down to the total budget of $73.3 million, or a $1.1 million increase. Total expenditures are increasing by 1.5%. The other areas, net tax levy is going down, as I mentioned earlier, approximately 3%. And the estimated mil rate for next year will be $14.05, 70 cents below fiscal year This chart, you can see the mil rate and the adjustments over time. The goal really is to have a predictable and stable tax rate. Unfortunately, last year, we had a situation where we had the revale, but we were able to, this year, make that up by utilizing various revenues to reduce impact on the residential taxpayers. And also, hopefully, we will continue to have a predictable and stable tax rate going into the future. So, again, looking at the tax reduction for our citizens, again, the median rate of a house is about $515,000, or again, it'll be about $360 reduction. I'm going to turn it back to Director Salas to go over some of the new revenues that offset these taxes.
Yes, thank you. So, as the city administrator referenced, part of the reason that the city is able to turn back a net tax levy, tax rate to our citizens, is through $3 million in new revenues. This pie chart represents some of the new revenues, which were really broadly distributed among a variety of sources, which ensure some stability in ensuring that these revenues will come forward for the coming year. First, we have an increase in use of fund balance. Although the increase in use of fund balance is significant over the prior fiscal year, it is still within the city's written policy, and we'll talk about that later in the presentation. We have state revenue sharing. State revenue sharing came forward with a strong forecast, and we've put that straight into the budget. We have a transfer from the Enterprise Fund. The City Enterprise Fund has carried a debt to the General Fund for quite some time, and we are taking some action on that. It will not only offset taxes in this coming fiscal year, but also improve our position with the ratings agencies for future bond issuances. We have a significant increase in rec department fees, just reflecting some of the increased costs and where we've landed over the last couple of years. Motor vehicle excise, motor vehicle excise revenues, and this is reflected both in the motor vehicle excise, as well as rapid renewal, which is our online motor vehicle excise tax collection. Motor vehicle prices continue to remain high, and so we took an optimistic approach to motor vehicle excise forecasting in this coming year and budgeted the same amount for 2025 that we received in full year fiscal year 2023. We have an increase in interest earnings. This is being generated by pooling interest earnings on the city's cash and investment position to the General Fund, rather than distributing it to special revenue funds on cash balances. That will require a single reading change to the city policy, but we did believe that it was a smart financial decision in consideration of the need to offer some tax relief to our citizens. Lastly, we have an increase in transfer from the ambulance fund, and we did increase our anticipated building permit fees, based on strong investment in the City of Saco, which we continue to see in the planning pipeline. So, stepping back into the numbers, we're going to take a look at what got built into this maintenance of effort budget that you see in the budget book. As a reminder, the maintenance of effort budget starts with last year's approved budget. We had year two of the approved capital plan, plus contracted increases. In lieu of a cost of living increase, there are pooled funds pending union negotiation and final determination of the city administrator's cost of living adjustment. We did subtract those one-time expenses that were approved in the previous year's budget, and of course, we had some other savings and new revenues, which get you to your maintenance of effort budget. This chart shows you some of the cost pressures that the City of Saco did face in its maintenance of effort budget. We continue to see significant increases in utilities. In the fiscal year 2025 budget cycle, this is coming primarily from main water. Specifically, the cost of servicing our fire hydrants is going up significantly. However, we do see some increases in costs in electricity. Personnel actually made up 70% of the total cost increase on a dollar basis for the City of Saco. But as you can see, the pooled funds and contracted increases for the fire union contract, which is still active through 2025, were 3.84%, which is in line with inflation, which is coming in at about 3.3%. Operating funds essentially flat year over year, and we did see 4.4-5% increase in capital, but that was largely offset with use of unassigned fund balance, and so it did not hit the tax levy for fiscal year 2025. As I mentioned, here's a little bit more detail on what I discussed. So, electricity up 12%, water up 30%. We did see some increase in software fees, partially from absolute fee increases and partially from reallocating from other accounts. And of course, there's the train station security and cleaning, which is related to the mid-cycle budget amendment from fiscal year 24. In terms of pay adjustments, when you look at the departmental line items, you will not see any pay adjustments for staff in the current budget, other than those obligated for the active fire union contract. A contingency amount has been budgeted under fringe benefits, pending union negotiations, and a final determination on COLA for our non-union employees. Some one-time items that were removed from the budget, we have our revaluation funds, which were backed out from last year, some planning projects that were backed out, and then some other equipment items that were one-time costs for our public safety departments. And then, of course, there are the savings in the budget and revenue increases discussed previously, revenue sharing coming in strong, optimistic forecasting for excise tax revenue, transfer from the Enterprise Fund, use of fund balance, transfer from the ambulance fund at $100,000, and some savings on insurance, specifically continued savings on our workers' comp, thanks to the hard work of the HR department that came out of our payroll audit. So, with the city administrator's budget, we start with what we calculated as our maintenance of effort budget. We add approved increases, subtract other savings or changes, and that gets you to your city administrator's budget. For some additional information, I'm going to turn it back over to our city administrator.
Thank you very much. Phase two, city administrator's budget, these are small increases that were put into the budget, contracted support for departments, membership and fees adjustments, software supplies and printing adjustments. And there is an additional software for emergency response and to, or notification to residents. During the unfortunate incident with the shooting in town, there were a lot of residents that were concerned that they weren't able to be notified. There are products out there that allow us to be able to notify people via their telephone or other methods, and they were exploring those with the department, the Communications Department. Hopefully, if this goes through, we'll have that in place, and like I said, we're evaluating various types. Then there's equipment and maintenance for public safety. The next area that I want to talk about is headcount increases. I am proposing that there be two new firefighters and EMS providers for next fiscal year. They would start in the third quarter of the fiscal year, or January 1, 2025, and this would allow for a lesser impact on the 2025 budget. Also, in this, in the 2025 budget, we'll be using ambulance revenue funds to offset these costs. In Parks and Recreation, there's a teen coordinator being proposed, and the teen coordinator will be there to assist with running the new teen center program and fully be offset by recreation fee increases. And finally, in Public Works, I'm proposing a deputy city engineer. This would be a critical addition for succession planning and shoreline erosion mitigation Director?
So, taking you through some of the other city administrator changes, these were changes that were greater than $10,000. We did work as a team to ensure that these more significant adjustments to the budget were in alignment with the council goals, as we discussed at the start of this presentation. So, under financial stability, the city administrator's approved our rooftop solar project for our DPW, which will be offset by direct pay tax credits through the IRA Act. There is a dedicated special revenue fund that's been spun up to shelter surplus cable franchise fees over and above the cost of the Communications Department, which ensures sustainable funding for our communication services, in case there is a change in franchise fee applicable regulations in our contract with Charter. There were also some additional savings. We have a new fuel contract, saving the city more than $20,000. And we did look to factor the police staffing line by $100,000, in consideration of some of the staffing challenges that department has continued to face. Should the department come to full staffing, of course, the city administrator will come back to council for a budget amendment to ensure that department is fully funded. We also had some additional revenues over and above the maintenance of effort budget. We increased the code enforcement revenues forecast, and we, as I mentioned previously, are recommending that interest earnings be consolidated to the General Fund to further offset taxes for our citizens. Under schools and infrastructure, there were some operational increases for the DPW, just based on what the market rates are now for some of the services and materials that they require for the services they provide the city. There are some increases to capital reserve accounts and new equipment approved in the capital plan. There is funding to stabilize the equipment storage facility at Lund Road. This is a property the city has owned on a tax-acquired basis for several years. It would be a multimillion-dollar facility to rebuild, and so we're looking to stabilize the structure so we can continue to use it for its current purposes. And then there are some additional public safety equipment purchases in the capital plan. Under economic opportunity, there are funding increases for the Dyer Library and Saco Museum, so that they can continue their great work supporting our residents, and a funding increase for B-Sup Transit, as requested by that director. And lastly, under growth and innovation, we have some additional contracted services for scanning and grant matches for the planning department, and we're looking to align city solicitor costs with historic averages. The city administrator's budget contains a use of fund balance in the amount of $951,650. This slide provides you a breakdown of how that funding is anticipated to be used. So the top, we do have that Lund Road storage facility, as I mentioned, $350,000. We've allocated nearly $10,000 as a local match for a FEMA grant that the city is going to apply for, for a fire protection and safety simulator. There's $125,000 allocated to a covert replacement on Boom Road. The City of Saco does already have ARPA funds dedicated to this specific project, and so it's important that we get it under contract prior to the December 31st deadline. $200,000 is allocated as tax stabilization to offset ongoing expenses. $90,000 to support a commercial property revaluation in the coming year. $11,000 for a Tomcat carbon scrubber for the fire department. $105,000 for DPW rooftop solar, as mentioned previously. $2,900 for convey 911 iPad and ballot costs for our clerks department. $8,000 in one-time costs for those two new firefighters, and $50,000 set aside for file scanning, so that we can digitize our critical planning records. The question, of course, would be at such a high amount, does the use of fund balance still fall within policy? And I'm happy to report that indeed it does. City ordinance requires that the unassigned fund balance fall between 8.33% and 16.67% of the following year's budget. Unassigned fund balance surplus are those funds that exceed the 16.67% maximum. The unassigned fund balance surplus, as of June 30th, 2023, was $1,287,846. Based on surplus revenues, anticipated use of fund balance, and other factors, the Finance Department is forecasting that the unassigned fund balance will increase $680,709 in fiscal year 24. That would bring our unassigned fund balance surplus, that's above the 16.67%, to $1.78 million, as of June 30th, 2024. The city administrator's budget contains a use of fund balance of $951,650. This would leave our unassigned fund balance surplus, as of June 30th, at $833,341, or Are there any questions about this unassigned fund balance question?
Any questions?
And now, I'll turn it over to the city administrator.
Thank you. The next Monday, we will be hearing from the Water Resource Recovery, Police Department, Economic Development and Planning, and Parks and Recreation. April 10th will be joint meeting with the school board that is specifically dealing with the referendum. In addition to that, we'll have codes, the city clerk, and finance. And finally, on April 22nd, we'll have the fire department, the Communications Department, Public Works, Capital Program and Assessing. And on April 29th, Information Technology, Saco Main Street, Dyer Library, B-SOP, and Age Friendly Saco. There will be a public hearing on May 6th for the review of the budget, and also review of budget motions and amendments and council discussion. And finally, on May 13th, it is anticipated that the city council will vote on the adoption of the city and school budget. So, before I end my comments, I just want to take, again, this opportunity to thank Glenna Salas for her dedication over the past few years to the City of Saco. As you may be aware, she's leaving to take another job in Connecticut, and I wish her well, and I certainly appreciate the time that she gave us to let us know that she was leaving and the notice that she gave us, and worked diligently to put this budget together, along with the Finance Director. So, I want to thank her specifically for that kind of professionalism, and wish her well as she moves on to another part of her life. So, I'm available for questions. We can, we'll get city council members, if they have questions, certainly you can email me. I look forward to working through this budget and having a fiscal 2025 budget that matches the needs of the community, as well as your expectations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would like to jump on that as well, Glenna. He kind of beat me to it, but thank you. When I started five years ago, you've been the person that I've gone to with questions, and the way you explain have been amazing. And I just, you're going to be truly missed, and I do want to wish you the best in you and your family. Hey, do we have any questions for anyone regarding anything that was gone over the budget? Council Berman?
Yeah, thanks. I do have two questions. But again, thank you, as always, for really clear and concise presentation. It all makes sense, the way you present the information, I think, is really transparent, and I really appreciate that. Could we go back to the fund surplus slide real quick?
Thank you. Yeah, so do I understand correctly that the charter requires us to fall between 8.33 and 16.67 of the following year's budget for an assigned fund balance? We're currently over that, so we're trying to bring it back down into that level. But even once we do that, we will still have surplus that will need to be expended? Is that the right way to read this slide?
Well, I don't know if you need to expend it, but I think under the charter, there is issues that you don't want to go over that amount. Money would be made available for use.
Yeah, so I guess that's the nature of my question. The charter specifies a minimum and a maximum, it seems to me, and we're currently over the maximum, so are we obligated then to bring it back down to that level? And is tax relief one way to do that, or are there other ways? That's kind of what I'm asking.
Sure. We always recommend that there, and I know that the director, the budget director has always recommended, and most financial professionals would recommend, that they're used for non-recurring expenses. In some instances, like this year, specific to stabilization of taxes was because of the impact from last year. So, whatever is done should be a non-recurring expense. That would be what we would recommend.
Okay, but there are no other consequences of exceeding the maximum of the charter mandated cap on the unassigned fund balance?
So, I understand your question. So I understand your question. The $1.7 million that's anticipated as of June 30, 2024 is a guess. So it's possible the city of Saco comes in just still at $1.2 million. It could be as of June 30, 2024, it's actually lower. The city of Saco does have, I believe, about $500,000 use of unassigned fund balance budgeted in 2024, plus 2025 has $951. So you're actually spending more than your surplus as of June 30, 23. I think the challenge has been the delay in producing an audited unassigned fund balance because the timing is supposed to be, you receive your audited unassigned fund balance, and if there's a surplus, allocate at that point and maybe factor that into your budget. We are working actively with our auditing firm. I've been in communication with them today. We are hoping to wrap the financial statements by the end of the week. That is a commitment that we've gotten from them, and at that point, a follow-up discussion can be had. But the $1.7 million surplus that we've placed here is a guess. It's really to give council comfort that $951 is not out of policy.
And if, when we receive the audited 2024 budget someday, if we still exceed our fund balance maximum at that point, we will be, have the opportunity to reallocate those funds towards something?
That's the timing that's supposed to happen, and we have had a couple of years where there was surplus that hadn't yet been designated in a budget, and at that point, council had that conversation.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And my second question, I know in, I guess now it's the 2024 budget that we're currently operating under, there was some confusion about the use of TIF funds and reallocating TIF funds back into general expenses, I guess. Is that happening here, and can we put some transparency into that now so that we avoid that confusion later?
Right, and that's about $2 million that we'll be using. And as, when I mentioned that we hope to have the budget adopted on May 13, it's our intention to have all motions, and they're including the one for the TIF.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I mean, it was briefly just touched upon with the fund balance, but that's, again, I just, like all of us, have had a brief opportunity to review this, but the immediate thing that came to mind when I saw this was that use of fund balance. And I understand the situation we're in, but it's why I brought it up several weeks ago with the audit, because by the code, we are to have audited financials before council designates that funding. So once again, we're actually budgeting funds that should have been expended already into a future, two years past when these funds were. And again, it's just, it's problematic for me personally, I guess, because I don't understand how, based on code, based on the intent, which is to spend those, we get it January, by February, council's supposed to dictate where those, that's a policy call for this body, not so much staff. It's for us to determine, and it hasn't been operating that way for some years, and I understand there's a lot of moving parts, but it needs to be corrected because I can't personally continue in this manner. Additionally, for the rest of council, I said at the end of last budget cycle, I would do my best to make you all aware when I, when I see certain things that I just, you know, kind of assume. And again, with this use of fund balance, these are the proposed uses that the administrator has proposed. They're not what we have to accept. So where I'm going with this is last year, Councilor Berman, you made a motion, suggestion to spend $500,000, I believe it was, you know, for, I forget appropriate, we'll call it infrastructure. We didn't really move on that since then, but I'm saying that we have, it looks like in theory, $1.2 million right now in surplus that, again, I understand that the administrator, this is how he's allocated, how he would like to spend it. I'm just letting us all know that that's not how we have to spend it if we choose to spend. We could put all of it, 1.2, back to tax stabilization. Just want to throw it out there so we understand it, that we're not shackled by this. This is just a suggestion. So we're not here in several weeks wondering how we, I don't know, you know, fund things that we may want to fund.
And I think that's an excellent point. One of the things I do want to clarify, though, is the city had their financials into the auditor in December, and we've been waiting and hounding, I mean, we could give you half a dozen, maybe 20 emails we have to our auditor to get that information back to us, and it's been a struggle, and we're very disappointed in the auditor. As I indicated to you, we will probably be recommending, not for the 2024 audit, excuse me, yeah, 2024 audit, we'll be looking to maybe go out to bid. It's too late to do the 2023, 24 budget, audit, I mean, and so that's going to start, it should be starting soon for next year, and we're probably in the fall start putting together an RFP for a new auditing firm, so, because we don't want this to happen. And I totally agree with you, Councilor Johnston, it should be in your hands and in the city council's hands. The only thing we do as a staff is to recommend that you try to use it for nonrecurring expenses. That's the only thing we would recommend to you. If you want to change how they're being used, that's fine. It's just that it's better to have them as nonrecurring.
Yeah, and again, I'm not criticizing the suggestions. I just wanted to be clear, we have several new council members, this is, as the whole budget is, a policy call for the elected body, not necessarily what's presented from staff. It's just, it's something that I've always understood, but, you know, through the years, I've certainly seen, you know, confusion amongst councillors. So I just, right, right out in front and center, you know, it's our budget at this point.
Sure. And what our role will be in that is to advise you as to the pros and cons to what you're proposing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question, I don't see it in here, but I haven't had time to review. I didn't see anything related to ARPA. This is the year, this is the budget in which all things would have to, we have to, the 31st, I believe, to not spend but allocate, and that would be in this budget year, and I just haven't had a chance to find it if it is in here.
The, and I'll let Director Salas expound on it, but we need to enter into agreements and to commit that money by the end of December 2024, but I'll let her expand on that.
Yes, so in our previous budget cycle in fiscal year 2024, all of the funds that we received from ARPA were designated to specific expenditures, so there was not any funds remaining at the end of that budgeting cycle to allocate. Council is at their discretion to review those projects, and we can provide a report of the projects that were funded by ARPA and the status of those expenditures. And as the city administrator mentioned, it is important that the city be under contract or have an invoice for those funds by December 31, 2024, or we do need to return them to the federal government.
Anyone else? Councilor Gunn?
Just to piggyback on Councilor Archer, if we could receive a report basically of how those ARPA funds are at this moment for the whole council that way, you know, to piggyback on Councilor Johnson's points, you know, when we're looking at, you know, big projects that we haven't really discussed at the council level, or the matter of tax relief, you know, as sin have got track of tax relief, it's good to know what funds that we have available would still with ARPA so that we can look at this on a side fund balance once we get the audited numbers.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions, comments regarding the budget, anything going forward? Okay, guess we're not seeing any. I think they're all set. Okay, that now takes us to item 10, and that is administrative update.
So what I have is basically just information regarding business partnership initiative, Route 112 Simpson Road Turn Lane. Then, of course, I've reiterated the various budget presentation schedules. Then, just a reminder that, that the fire department will be having an open house, and it'll be on Saturday, April 6, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the central fire station, and there are various planned activities for the public and upcoming agenda items. I, I had a meeting today with the county via Zoom, and we talked about the dredge project, and the county is still interested in pursuing the operation of the dredge. They will be moving it, I believe now, as the date is April 8. The county administrator, Mr. Zinser, would like each town to enter into a memorandum of agreement. I have a copy of that that I will be bringing to the council next week, next Monday. Talked to the mayor about this already. It's a, it's a, I've had Tim Murphy take a look at it. It's really non-committal of sorts. It just gives them a good idea as to who's going to participate, the move of the dredge and the cost of that. The county's going to front that, so that's going to happen, like I said, around April 8. They would also like to have a memorandum of agreement in place with all the cities and towns that are interested by April 8. So I'll be bringing that back to the city council next, next Monday. If there's any other questions, I'll try to answer them, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions for city administrator, Mahankal? Okay, not seeing any. That takes us to item 11, and that is council discussion and comment. Any councilors wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing any. That takes us to item 12, and that is an adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at 7:42 passes, 7:0. Thank you, everyone, and have a great night.